Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have approval of the regular council meeting minutes? Bless you. Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Thank you.
Baker?
Kent.
Bassett?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Marth?
Here.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping me in line, guys. So you have the June 17th council minute, council minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections?
I make Bush to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Barnes?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yep.
Jones?
Epstein.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Thank you. You have your approved minutes in your packet. Are there any questions? Cheryl, now that Bob Aaron has your servers, how long does he, what's it gonna be, 30 days yet?
Mm-hmm, 30 days.
I have one. I got a question. Towards the bottom, tow vehicle from El Grande, $85.
That is for a stolen, it was a stolen motorcycle and a pickup that was used to haul that stolen motorcycle. It is involved. We towed it. And then Antwerp Police Department is investigating the stolen motorcycle. They investigated further, found the vehicle was, the person actually owned the vehicle was not involved in the actual theft. So the vehicle is being released, or was released, to the owner. And we submitted the, we'll have to pay for the fill, but we'll submit for restitution through the court case.
Okay. And one of them was recover police department recordings from Corson.
Our video, audio recording system went down. I had two interviews on there that I lost, or didn't record, on crimes, sex crimes that I interviewed on. And then it is down again. It just went down over the weekend. They did two interviews this weekend, and it did not record anything. So I'm not sure what the problem is with it.
Is it just audio recording, or is it video and audio?
It's a video and audio system. And it's not recording either one.
I have a question there. For County Career, for first responder training, how many people do we have in that?
Eight.
Eight. And of those eight, is this where the village pays, or do they reimburse?
We pay.
I think we pay.
And if they don't pass, then they pay us back.
Okay. Another question.排水 water treatment plant, telescoping work?
A telescoping valve. I'm drawing a blank. It's sludge related. They've still gotta come back and do a control board yet.
And on underground utilities, I know we spoke the other day, but have you gotten any further on that? Or they haven't gone back to you?
No, we still have to work out some stuff.
Okay, okay. I don't have any more questions. And if nobody else does, let's take a break.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Marth? Baker?
Yep.
Well, Kent would like to skip ahead to the alley at the Catholic Church, I guess. You must feel sorry for anybody that has to sit here at a council meeting waiting for turns.
I say make him wait.
Oh, yes.
He was probably gonna stay anyway, right?
Probably not.
State your name, please.
My name is Greg Slattery. I'm here representing St. Michael's Pastoral Council. You may all know that the church purchased the old Wheeler property a couple of years ago. We remodeled into its office space, et cetera. And now that we own both the church and the adjoining ground there, we'd like to investigate redoing what I will call our campus parking and flow. And I'm here asking about the, whether or not we could get that alley vacated. I've done research on property descriptions. Ron Wheeler indicated that, you know, that's his, that was his alley, okay? But when I look at the descriptions, and I'm no surveyor, but the church description says to the east edge of the alley. Wheeler property, the old Wheeler property says to the west edge of the alley. That leads me to believe that we don't own the alley. And so if we don't own it, then you guys must own it. But again, that's just me reading it, okay? If you're not familiar, it runs between the church and Wheeler, and it comes out right on the curve on High Street. It's not a good alley to go out of or into. And our concern is catechism night and event nights, where people, especially people maybe unfamiliar with it, come in and out of there. So we would like to have council, if you can, vacate it. And the plan would be to just probably extend, you know, grass and maybe some bushes across it. And then we plan on doing like a circle loop. This is still in planning stages. It all is contingent on whether or not we can get it vacated. We would have some kind of circle drop off. So if people wanted to let their kids off of catechism, they would drop them off where that alley is now, but on the church property. And also it'd make it easier to access where our new office is. So I guess I'm here ignorant, trying to find out what the process is to get that done, if we can get it done.
Kent, would you like to update us on what you already know?
Yeah, of all nights, Troy's not here. I think I've got a fairly decent hand on it from one we did before. It just goes back a few years. You know, Troy said residents can petition to vacate one, where the village can initiate one on their own. The simpler way is if we initiate it, there's a simple waiver to consent vacation form. And from what I've found, I think every contiguous property owner is gonna be the Catholic Church. So we don't have to basically get one signature.
Now, there is, I think, an apartment the next house down, but they exit across our parking lot, which apparently there's an old vacated alley there as well. And so, but what we're asking wouldn't keep them from doing that. They still come in and out of. But yeah, if one of those people use that alley to come in and off of High Street, they'd have to go around and come in from the back. They wouldn't be cutting anybody off from that.
And basically, I guess then to accomplish this, have to have a survey and a legal description done up. The surveyor, surveyor'd also have to do a vacation plat with a bunch of signature blanks for everybody to eventually, you know, sign off on. Once, once a survey and legal description are done, the village would pass an ordinance saying, yeah, we're vacating that. And then everything would get recorded after all those signatures are gathered. I guess the only thing, as far as the village end, is we do have a sewer stub from West High going, I guess I say, down the alley to the south. It's probably not even halfway down. I think it dead ends like up around where the old office parks. Somewhere in that neck of the woods. So we would still need access to that, or an easement, or whatever you wanna call it.
You would have access from the parking lot to there, yeah.
I don't know if that would have to be written in. Troy might say, well, that should be part of the legal, whatever, showing that we've got an easement.
Twenty years down the road, they can't build over it or anything.
Yeah.
And so it's a fairly simple process. It might take just a little while. And then the biggest thing to work out is if, if council says, yeah, fine, move ahead, it's who's paying for what.
Well, I would figure that since the church is requesting it, we'd pay for the survey.
This is between the church building and where you turn into Wheeler's garage there.
Yep.
Right.
That alley goes around.
And then it also includes the leg, like it runs past the veterans.
Yeah, it goes up and terminates into the veterans.
It makes like an L coming off High Street, and then it L's out to Antwerp Drive, if that makes sense.
Yep.
It L's into the, the other alley, the alley that goes up.
Yeah, that's, but we're not asking for that to be vacated, because then somebody in that house would have to build a driveway out to 18 or something. So we're just talking about the north-south portion of it. That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
There's an east-west that allows access back to the apartments.
So Kent, do, do you, does Greg need our blessing so that he can move on this, or what do we do?
Well, yeah, if you want the village to initiate the process moving forward, you guys need to...
If I heard you correctly, there needs to be a survey. Someone needs to pay for it.
That's what he said.
And then there's going to also be the expense in the filing fees.
Yeah, there'd be recording fees.
So the church would have responsibility for all the fees associated with doing this.
It's up to, it's up to you guys.
Well, that's what you guys are willing to pay for.
Right now.
But the church is willing to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, if we need a motion on this, I would make a motion that we go ahead and file as of the village with the Catholic Church paying for all expenses incurred throughout the thing.
I'll second that. Jones?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Richway?
Yes.
I guess the only thing for moving forward is, your surveyor can always call us. Either Troy or I, he can explain what he needs to see as far as that plat vacation. He should know. The last one we did, though, they left something off, so. And then when it would come to getting signatures, who can sign for the church? Is it somebody local, or do you have to go?
It'd either be our priest, Father Dan, or the bishop. So what you're telling me is my first step is to survey?
Yeah, I'd get a survey and a legal description, and tell the surveyor to do it as a vacation plat. That way he'll know what he's gonna do versus after he does a survey and description and say, oh, yeah, we need a vacation plat. You'd rather do it all at once.
Okay.
Then once we see that, and I know for sure that I've got all the properties right, just being the Catholic Church, it'll be easy enough to get this signed off.
All right.
And then council passes an ordinance and go from there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
See you, Greg.
Okay, we'll go on to boards and commissions. The park board met June 24th, and the minutes are in the packet. Is this a done deal that, and the problems with the restroom doors, is it a done deal as it says they're gonna?
Yeah, it's done.
They're gonna get put dead bolts on?
It's already done.
It's done, okay. All right. Any questions about anything in the park board minutes? All right. We will go on to the planning commission, met June 20th. Minutes are in the packet. There was an application for a lot split submitted by Marvin and Janice Edwards. The, that's on 321 West High Street, and it was approved. Are there any questions about that? Okay. Are there any other, oh, well, I guess we have a...
Hix TV.
Pardon me?
Hix TV.
Oh, that's what had me confused. I wrote down EMS report in that spot. So you have Hix TV, June meeting minutes. I believe they're on the table tonight. If you had a chance to read those, did you have any questions about them? We'll go on then to council committee reports. We have police and fire committee. Minutes in the packet. They met May 20th. And there are committee minutes, the ordinance committee met June 17th. Yes.
If I may please, police and fire, there's a statement in here that I do not agree with. It says the chief will only have a car to drive as long as the Crown Vic is operable. I do not remember hearing that done.
Well, I pretty much made that clear when he was hired.
No, you did not. Not to me.
Okay.
I thought we would...
Has anybody else on council heard that before?
I don't recall it.
Okay.
The statement that was made in that meeting was the Crown Vic would be, as long as the Crown Vic was operable...
He would use it.
We would use it. And when it becomes inoperable, it'll be disposed of.
And replaced.
Now, the other thing about having four cars is always gonna state a three.
That he would have a car?
Yes.
I always said that we, I was not, I was not in favor of having a four-car department. That when, that when the car that he was driving for personal use was gone, it was gonna be replaced. That was my thought. That doesn't mean that that's what you want, so. But if, if nobody on this committee, if the people that were there for this, you don't think that was right, I can remove that part. That's why I sent it out to everybody to approve before I put it in the council packet tonight.
Well, I don't agree with it. I don't think that was ever said, I don't think it was ever said in this particular meeting. And, and I don't remember it being a fact of agreeing with his being hired.
Cheryl, so will you let the minutes show? Ron Beverly stated that he does not believe that that was in, that took place at the meeting. All right.
That's not the way. It was said that the Crown Vic would be in service until it was inoperable, and then we would dispose it.
Okay. So are there any other questions about any of the committee minutes? Okay. And so going on, we had on the table tonight, water and sewer committee meeting minutes. Are there, is there anyone, by the way, that wants to, you know, do you have anything to discuss following up the minutes of your committee, Mike?
No, we had, that was an hour and 15 minutes, but we decided to go down to the sanitary plant and just take a tour. Jeff walked us through it. Jesse was there. We saw who was all there. But we had never been down there as a committee and kinda did a walkthrough, looked at how it was operating, you know, issues with making sure all the maintenance schedules were keeping, being kept up on, and things of that nature. We took some notes. You know, there's floors that need to be cleaned. There are certain things that need to be maintained at a certain level, greased and oiled. And we wanted to make sure that, and we believe all of our department heads are keeping up with maintenance, so she was with the equipment. But we thought it was a different type of meeting. Went well, so.
Then we're gonna do a follow-up.
Yes.
We're gonna do a follow-up meeting, and then we're gonna do a water treatment plant. Kind of a walkthrough on that too, Jesse, so.
Any questions? I think we should do it more often. I think it should be done more often.
Walk through.
Yeah. They know what's going on, and they know what's going on.
We can do that.
Okay. All right. Are there any other committee reports from council? We will go on to the administrative report.
I'm gonna do things kind of out of order just a little bit. One thing I didn't find out till, after I turned this in to Cheryl, since it's Thursday holiday, the guys will be out spreading mosquitoes Wednesday night, weather permitting. Then as far as the actual report I gave you, the first item I'm gonna leave for last, the OEP A inspection report and other documents are in your packet. Does anybody have any questions on that? If you think one later, that's fine. Our cap's coming back July 17th to go over the asset management project, which is the water-related. And then after that, they're still saying it might be 60 to 90 days till we get the final product. The GIS is still floating in space somewhere. I'm not sure what's taking that so long. But Jesse did at least get some dates from them at the last minute to get submitted to OEP A. So we should be good to go on that. But it's just been sort of a frustrating experience. And here again, depending on weather and how much you've gotten caught up in the meantime, the well field testing, the various testings, as far as I know, are still happening next week, unless I hear something later this week. The asphalt grinding's down at the lot. People can start taking those. I didn't realize you were getting Himalaya mountains down there. So I passed word around, if you know anybody that wants them, as long as they can load them and haul them away, that's, that's fine. We need to get rid of some of them. And then also lot-related, it just so happened I was down talking to Billy a day, and a gentleman came in with a load of like lumber, two-by-fours. And he wasn't happy, and I said, we don't take them. He goes, well, it's wood, which that's true. But the lot's for limbs, brush, grass, you know, leaves, natural products, not plywood and everything else. People sneak it in every once in a while, but I'm hoping people just won't abuse the privilege of having the lot. And as far as being shorthanded in the next few weeks, but we'll still try to get some stuff done. Austin's got another training class. And then before the very, very last part, if I get orders, we'll go back up to number one. The estimate you got from Corson for installing cameras to watch the alley. I'm probably jinxing this, but it's not been hit since February. But since 2013, 14, it's been hit like seven times. But, you know, you can see the price they've got quoted. Like I said, it usually costs $400 if they have to replace a whole panel. Our insurance deductible's $1,000. So kinda you guys is calling, you wanna spend money. The only thing I thought of, and it was half jesting, but still, I was gonna ask the chief. When somebody goes out the wrong way, which I see probably once a week, somebody will go this way.
In between this.
Yeah. Can you give them a ticket if they show up on camera, like, say, a week later or something? I mean, is that...
If we can positively ID.
Wow.
You know, driver, and I don't see why we could.
See, I don't know how that works, if it's, but anyway. So if you want time to think about it more, if you wanna make a decision tonight, that's up to you.
Just talking in general, like, let's say they strike something.
Yeah, they'd be putting it up mainly to see, like, if a semi hits it tomorrow, we know it was...
Right. Well, I mean, if we have it on camera, and they, actually, for property damage only, they have 24 hours to report the accident. So if they don't report within 24 hours, then...
Nobody, nobody ever does.
If I go to that camera and actually issue a citation for leaving the scene of an accident and whatever charge fits, you know, going the wrong way.
Kent, do you have an opinion on this?
Seems like a lot of money at this point in time. I haven't even asked Cheryl where we might get it from. I'm not opposed to trying to catch somebody one of these days, but...
Have you tried another service?
No, this was the first company I contacted.
Put in a lot of, well, sections for that kind of money. And, and something about how we operate or something, usually when we get, like, this says 4155, we usually need something a bunch more, because we had to have this or that.
Well, yeah, it's somewhere in there. We'd have to buy a computer.
Oh, yeah.
A monitor. So.
You know, some of these computer systems, or heck, not, camera systems, you get off to like Amazon and stuff like that. You might be able to install something yourself. And do it a heck of a lot cheaper, you know. And it's, 'cause some of those cameras are pretty good.
A lot of it's a storage capacity for the amount of time it's gonna be running all the time, picking up traffic, and... It just seems like a lot of money, especially if your general fund's not setting the best.
Well...
You don't wanna keep taking from it.
After, if you've had a chance to think about it, you know, let Kent know.
Yeah, I mean, it can weigh them meeting, or whatever. So, no, it's...
Thanks for getting the ball rolling on that.
And then really the whole rest of the two pages. I know the year's half over. Most people probably don't think about that. But I tried to think a year and a half, two years ahead, when I knew I was gonna be around forever. So take that how you want. But anyway, I am starting to put together the big cost items I know are coming up for next year, along with a few maybes, or, you know, whatever. It's more or less to give you folks an idea, too, some of the money you're gonna have to, need to be coming up with, or that's, we're already committed to. The paving, like I said, that's just my very tentative list. That's not saying I'm gonna do those. That's open to ideas as the year progresses here. But as you can see with the water sewer stuff, there are some things we are doing for sure in 2020. I'm trying to take into account what general fund's gonna look at, look like first of the year, along with the utility departments. I've been trying to spend as much out of them as possible. The sewer work next year, you know, that 1.2 million for the High Street Chicago storm, might end up having to find some money for that, whether it's borrowing, or we'll have to start working with our cap or somebody. So anyway, if you have questions on it, that's fine. You can ask away, but those are the ones I have thought of at this point that are gonna be coming up. But also be thinking about the tower, the industrial drive extension work. And if you wanna do that loop from Haven to Spencerville with the wellfields, and when the wellfields will be. I mean, it's...
Bob?
The ifs and buts still out there.
Unless Bob leaves us a couple million or something, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking, spending a lot of money.
Well, they started on the project for the wellfield study, or is that still?
Jones and Henry's has just been getting everybody lined up, scheduled, and rescheduled, and then re-rescheduled. They won't know anything till...
Start next week.
Monday.
Supposedly, if, whether. So I said, we've got 60-some thousand wrapped up in those tests. Then when we get those results, then you move on to the next step of...
Right.
But, you know, again, if you have an idea you wanna do it 2021, 2022, just kinda let me know, or whatever. And then the sheet with all the people's hours, I don't know if anybody cares or not. I have to keep track of it anyway for stuff I normally do. If you don't want me to waste a sheet of paper, I won't. I might like to see what people are doing.
Thanks for looking ahead, Kent.
I'm looking ahead. That's it. Those people have a question later on.
Does anybody have any questions for? Does anybody have any questions for Kent? We'll go on then. The solicitor's not here, but we have a draft of the mowing ordinance. And I was wondering earlier today, Chief, have you had a chance to read this ordinance, the draft for?
Yes.
The mowing? And I know there's some concerns about the way it was written.
Such as?
Who gets fined?
Yeah. Who gets fined?
I don't think it's in there, right?
I guess we need that clarified in this ordinance. I didn't know if the committee had a chance to read it before, you know, before.
Before. Send him an email.
Okay.
I see Holgate, and I cut it out of the defense paper, Holgate just passed an ordinance on this. And playing on the computer, I see a lot of times they're doing this.
There are, I've been reading about them in different papers too. But, so this isn't ready to?
No.
Kent, let that for a minute.
Do you wanna do a first reading tonight as it is?
We can.
We're not gonna do it as an emergency or anything, but we could go ahead and do the first reading.
If we don't do it as an emergency, summer will be over.
Well, we're not ready to pass it tonight.
No.
But we could start and have the first reading tonight.
Can we pass it after the fir-, after we have a reading?
Yep, we can have it at the next meeting, you can wait.
Basically how it's reading is no person, so that's basically whoever.
Anybody.
Shall permit it. So if it's a landowner and allow them to permit it, it would fall back to the landowner. Or it could also, if the person did it without that landowner's permission or ignored the landowner's permission and did it anyways, it may go either way. But you can't ask for clarification.
Could be occupant of that.
Yeah, it could be an occupant of that, so.
Whoever violates is pretty well got under control.
So basically it could come down to. An owner could be down, come down to the person's actually blowing it into.
That needs to be clarified for sure.
If you want it. Mainly, were we talking about the landowner or the occupant of that property being responsible?
Yes.
I think.
We're gonna have to specify.
Yeah.
Because they'll definitely use it.
That way, because I think our example was like a 12-year-old boy or girl mowing lawns.
So I could, I could take my rider down to Fisher's house and blow it all out in the grass and he'd have to pay? This is the way you guys want it set up? Because I'm liking what you're saying.
Well, that's the way I took it, we discussed it the last week, that it is that person's responsible responsibility. So if my renter blows it out into the street, it comes on you? Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the way I took it.
Teach them how to mow.
I'm mowing the yard.
You have to.
I think it should be.
You have to go that way.
You have to specify though.
Whoever is living there?
Whoever's living or owning.
You're gonna have to teach your.
I think it should be, yeah, I mean, I think it should be the tenants.
Whoever lives there.
Right. So if it's, but if it's a vacant, obviously.
Unless the landlord takes care of the property.
Yeah.
But if I mow it, I do it, I should be fine. If I own the property.
If you own the property, if it's vacant, you don't have an occupant.
But the word to get out of that.
Yeah, that's all you need.
Yeah, hopefully one more time.
You would think as much as we've talked about this, the word would be out, but it's not. But your yard's gonna be getting mowed a lot here lately, Bob.
Thank you.
Cheryl, the ordinance, 2019-08 about editing and inclusion, codified the ordinance pretty much. Our, our ordinances are codified through December 31st, 2018. Did Troy look at them and approve their job?
No, this came straight from American Legal.
Okay, because normally the way he used to do it, they did it, I had the village solicitor, whoever was at the time, look at it, make sure it was all done correctly, and he approved it.
I had to email it to him, but he's gone, so I didn't get an answer.
And, and this is like, did they actually just get this done? I guess, okay.
Yeah, he got it by email.
Yeah.
All of this. We can do it next time, it's fine.
Let's, I mean, he needs to make sure it's done right, unless you did.
I think it came from.
Oh, it came from American Legal.
Oh, it did come?
Uh huh.
Okay.
The ones that did the codifying, so he hasn't given me an answer, it's okay. So we can wait, we can wait until next time.
I thought it came, the actual email came from.
All right, and then that puts us to update on Haines trucking, which I assume that we.
That was the email where he agreed.
That Mr. Haines agreed to, for the $35,000 payout.
Yes, so that's all in the process of being legalized.
I would like that on the agenda next time again, until we know that all that.
Till it's all signed.
Is done, yeah, and taken care of. Was Rodney also gonna do, pay off his revolving loan or?
That wasn't part of it, no.
Wasn't part of it, okay, all right, okay, great. Does anybody have anything, you know, from the solicitor that they're, that's pending that you're not getting an answer on or anything that we need to have on the agenda? Okay. So then we'll go to the department heads. Chief Dunning?
Just a couple things. Again, that Corson, like I said, the Corson thing, that was a lot of money we paid out that we didn't, couldn't recover, and now it's down again. I'm not sure what the issue is with that. Brandon met with the guy, because I don't understand computers or technology that well, so Brandon thought it sounded like we may have to wipe that system clean and download what we have on there onto another storage or another hard drive or something along that line. So it may be required where we have to purchase, he called it a terabyte, a four terabyte, I think, to get all that stuff that's off, that's on there now, onto that for storage purposes, because some of that stuff is probably public record. I'm assuming it would be public record retention under public record retention laws. So, but it's doing the, like I said, it's doing the same thing, didn't record or any video or audio this weekend on two interviews I did this weekend. Second thing is, is as of Friday morning, I received word from one of my officers that he will be resigning as of October 4th. Stephen Stose, he will be submitting something and writing to me in regards to that. He is getting married in October, so he is going to be moving on. So he, he, things could change, he may up that date, don't know, but.
What was the date?
October 4th. So.
That's nice, he gave you a nice amount of notes.
Yeah, yeah, so, and he'll be using up vacation, as he said, and getting ready and stuff like that, so.
Don't be missed.
So that's all I have.
Hey Chief, could you put a reminder out, say about the fireworks since it's 4th of July, about the ordinance, the four fireworks, remind? I mean, what is it or?
I'd have to look at it and see what exactly how it reads.
I mean, is there, is there an ordinance, I mean, you know?
Well, I'm sure there's an ordinance.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it'll be.
It's gonna be noisy.
Maybe you could put that ordinance on the police department's Facebook page if people wanna go there and look at it or don't know if they can shoot fireworks or not.
It's every time, every year, yeah, I mean, you've got it no matter what, so.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Remind people.
Yeah, it's gonna happen no matter what.
Right, and it's gonna be all right.
Yes, so.
Mindful the neighbors, don't do it all late at night, I mean.
Use some common sense.
Set off the fireworks, have the adults, they've been drinking all day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure.
Next, in our fire chief Scott Kramer's absence, we have Assistant Chief Bruce Hart tonight for a report.
We have two things, Mayor. The fire department would like to ask you to put on Adam Miller as a fire department, as a fireman.
Okay.
And then the second one is Ashley Limper. She's applying to be an E M T. She has, she has to finish her skills and then pass the registry, but we'd like to get the ball rolling to get her forward also.
Yeah, Scott told me that Ashley Limper is studying for her registry for an E M T. And then Adam Miller is a firefighter from Southern Indiana, well, and he needs to take the class.
Yes.
So I would recommend Ashley Limper to the EMS and Adam Miller to the fire department.
I'd make a motion for the mayor of Rockville to nation fellows too.
Sure. Are we paying for the firemen?
I don't think so, I think we're trying to get. We're still getting grants for that.
Cheryl, are grants paying for that training?
We haven't been notified yet.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, roll call please.
Baker?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Anything else?
You had a great breakfast Saturday morning.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, you have eight first responders taking class. Give me a timeline when that, they'll be ready.
I was told Saturday that the timeline should have been middle of August, but they've missed a couple of classes, so it's gonna be pushed back.
So that'll help tremendously on your schedule.
Yes, yes.
That's good.
Put it in as that if you don't sign up for the first responder to go with the rescue squad, it's a free for all, basically. First come, first goes. And everybody else doesn't get paid or anything.
It's all firemen, right? All firemen that are first responders? Don't have anybody out in the public that's?
We have two from the public.
Okay.
But because you think they're future for the fire department, right?
Oh, for the rescue squad, yeah. Future rescue squad.
That's not.
That's going the right direction, that's for sure.
Yes.
Very encouraging.
Yes.
We've been trying to get that going for years and Scott and everybody, so.
Yeah, we're working on it, so as soon as we know the last day.
So when that happens, just so I understand, you only have to have one E M T on station?
Or one running in that block of eight hours.
One on a run.
Okay, and now you have two.
Right, but this is not gonna take care of daylight time that we're, we're short of, because the people who are taking it are, are working during the day, so it's mostly nighttime, midnight to five in the morning.
If you did have first responders available during the day, would you change the shifts of E M Ts?
That would have to be discussed with the police and fire committee. Yeah, we'd have to discuss that, because, you know, I don't want to take anybody's job away from them, but we want to streamline as much as we can also.
Any other questions for?
I could say from past experience, we had an E M T working for us and he was on call during the day, and I knew it was gonna help the department and get into patients or people in need quicker.
Right.
But he was one of those people that, you know, if he had to leave for an hour, half, an hour, three hours, he'd make up his time. So if any employer was willing to do something like that, it's a benefit for the city and for patient care.
Very much so.
He did a good job.
Thank you, Bruce. Corey, are you here representing the park board tonight? Would you like to? Would you, I assume you probably want to go to the podium anyway and talk about it, Day of the Park or anything?
Sure. I don't have all the logistics on the shoot.
That's all right. It was a great event, Day of the Park, you did a great job, and we're anxious to hear your comments and part of it.
Oh, I think it went over very well for, you know, first year I held the shoot. We had about, when it come to the car show, we had roughly 70 cars, cars and trucks show up. I wish we had a way to kind of get a handle on how many people came through the park. I wish the weather would've been a little bit cooler, I think people would've stayed longer. Sold a lot of beer, which is good, made some money there. The food trucks, I know I spoke to about three or four different food vendors, some of them had packed up early because they ran out of product, so that's good on our part, you know? A lot of the exhibitors that were there were pleased with the amount of money that they made, but for next year, we may, obviously we're gonna do some changing around, you know, maybe times and stuff like that. I know the fire department, they, they busted their butt the night before, the sun had went down, it was dark, and they were setting up tents and tables for their, for their breakfast, so we need to do something different next year to accommodate them better. So it could completely change our, our way of thinking. Instead of starting at eight in the morning, we might start something a little later in the day and then maybe go an hour or so later at night. Other than that, I think, I think everybody had a, had a good time. The volunteers all busted their butt, that's for sure, you know? Some of us put in, you know, 15, 16 hours a day to, to see it through, so.
How many volunteers did you have?
We had all the, all the park board members plus two, or plus three people, so we could definitely use some more, that's for sure.
Yeah. I thought it was great, there were nothing but good comments about it.
Yes, you guys did excellent.
Thank you. You guys got any questions for me?
Like I said, you do the wonderful job, Corey. You took the bull by the horns and he spent a lot of time calling people on the phone, emailing, you did a kind of stewarding of all the things, so.
Yeah, we got a, we've got a good foundation, we got a good base to build off of, that's for sure, so hopefully next year it'll get easier.
I'll tell you about the two park younger men that work for the park board, I think they're here for the summer. We made comments here after they, Armon and Gage, they.
Yeah, rock stars, man, those guys were, they were great.
Good job, Corey.
Thank you, thank you.
We will go on to the fiscal officers' report.
Okay, you have your usual fund status. Don't look at it too closely. I also put in the cash summary. It is the nearest I can get to our old report.
I like this one.
Where it shows everything that's come in so far and gone out. And then you also have the revolving loan report for May and June and the June income tax and utility collections.
But this revolving loan report is not correct.
You're talking about the one that owes from May and June?
Yes.
They came in and paid right after I made the report.
Okay.
So they are, they have paid.
Everything on here is current?
Yes.
All righty.
I got a question on the general budget. Do you see it going up at all? Any income coming in?
Well, we still have our second half of, of real estate tax to come.
That will help a little.
Yeah.
Okay.
Revolving loan, is there any extra money or what's left over in that if anybody else comes in and would need any additional funding or help of funding for your business or?
Yeah, on community development, 2051, we have $290,000.
And we offer stow it, was that 175?
150.
150. So.
It's.
That much could be committed.
Yeah, but we have no paperwork on it yet, so.
We might need it next year for. We might need it next year for projects of our own?
No.
You ain't getting it, she says.
I thought we could do that.
No, it's community development, not village.
Do you know where that, where all the paperwork is for stow it? I mean, if it's sitting on some desk, or?
It's in the pending file that Kent and I have in my office.
Okay, so it's just not.
It's not me.
So normally, if paperwork is stalled somewhere, it's either at Mommy Valley Planning.
It's at Mommy Valley right now.
All right. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't stalled with us.
No.
All right.
No.
So, did you mention all your reports?
Yep.
I just have to.
And you also have a report that John did on the EMS and Fire Department.
Yes.
Right, I always liked that one, just see that one. Just see where the ones are.
Yeah, and this is July. Look how many they've done so far this year.
Yeah.
It's gonna be their best year ever, if you wanna call it a best year.
That's a good thing, huh? I would like to see a report on the billing aspect of what we've built, what we've collected, and what happened, where we've not collected. I'd like to see that.
We can skip it on.
Yeah, Cheryl, Cheryl knows. Help him with that report if he doesn't mind to do it. I think he does. So, I have, and some of you have been asking, what's happening with sidewalks, what's happening with sidewalks? Because Mike Bailey sent out a lot of notices to people last year that sidewalks needed repaired. On my desk, before I came into the meeting, he gave me a letter, a list of people that had second notices sent for sidewalk noncompliant. He said the year was at March of 2019. Looks like there's 11 locations on the list, so.
Benoni list?
The sidewalk list. And so, I think he knows that we need to move forward, and if the, if the residents are not repairing them themselves, that we'll get quotes, and we'll repair them and assess it to their property taxes. Two of those locations, he did note, the damage was caused by tree lift, so, just for your information. Does anyone else have anything? Yes?
I need to add something to my report.
Okay, yeah, sure, go ahead.
I'm cancer aware of this. My office has been invested, infested with carpenter ants. So.
Still do?
Yeah.
They're at on while we're out there.
So, and I think they're on the inside of the wall, it appears where the water, the ceiling had leaked at one time, because there's a worm in the wall. So my guess is, my understanding is they like to live in rotten wood, and my guess is the wood is probably rotten behind that paneling. And that's probably where they're coming from, it looks like they're coming out from the bottom, under the casing, around the floor.
What have they done about it? What have you done about it?
We sprayed and set traps. I forgot to call Julie to see how things were.
So.
Probably an exterminator, but.
Yeah, I don't.
Nothing catch them in a trap, huh?
It's not in the headlines.
Now, see if I can get somebody there as quick as I can.
Yeah, I've come in and my, they were just all over my desk, and.
That would be awful.
I thought maybe it was termites at first, because it would, all the stuff that was along the floor.
Yeah.
I thought, they're eating the wood. But, so yeah, that's the only thing, and Scott contacted an exterminator on that, so.
All right, thank you. I'm sure Kent will try to eat things through. Anybody else? Yes?
I got a question about the tree lift with the sidewalks. If that's a village tree, is the village responsible for the sidewalk repair?
Yep. I'm sure that's been, been there, isn't it? I've never heard that.
We don't own a tree in this town.
We take that tree, don't we take that tree down? No.
If it's dying, we're required by law to take it down, we're required by law to trim it. But we do not own any trees, except in the park, or, you know, like at police station, if you got a tree out back. We don't own those easement trees. For whatever dopey reason, we have to take care of them. Well, let's get back to Bob's question. Did we fix the sidewalk? I thought we, I thought we had been known to do that.
Yeah. No.
I think nobody paid for mine when I fixed mine.
Glad to fix any of them that I put in, but I thought we did that.
Was it a tree? Was yours done?
I say a tree lifts up my sidewalk. And it's, you know, it's out there in the easement. But you're not gonna let me go out there and cut trees that long easements, because it's in the easements. So then, if it's tearing up my sidewalk, I think it's you guys' baby to take care of it.
Sleasements, we did it at Sleasements. He, he put in a sidewalk, we took down the tree.
Well, my tree's been there for 100 years, and it's, it's fine, it's healthy, but it's gonna lift up the sidewalk.
Eventually, yeah. I think.
Takes another 100 years to lift it, Bob, don't worry about it.
If someone was gonna replace a sidewalk, you know, I think there is a situation where we have removed the trees if they were gonna replace their sidewalk. Right. Is that correct, Kent?
You wanna cut the tree down, you can, because it'll cost you more to cut the tree down, and we'll fix the sidewalk.
Well, it is expensive to cut trees down, for sure.
Well, so then people can't fix your sidewalk till the tree and the roots go, so what you gonna do?
Cut the roots and kill the tree.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't care, just so I know what the hell they might do. But yeah, if the tree's gotta go, I think I've already.
The ordinance that should say in there what we put in. We discussed this all before, and it should be in the minutes somewhere, or whatever. Yeah, somewhere it is, because me and we've went over this one. Yes, we have. 100 times. And I say we took the tree down for them, and they replaced the concrete.
Well, that's not what people are wanting. They want us to do this concrete and get rid of the tree.
Well, of course they want it, they wanted us to replace their sidewalk, all of it, too.
Well, so I'll just, I'll use me for an example. Say I've still got a tree in my yard, and my sidewalk needs replaced. So you'll come cut my tree down, or your tree, and then you'll tell me to fix my sidewalk. They're still gonna say, that was your tree messing up my sidewalk, why am I paying anything?
Get the minutes out where you don't.
You know, I don't think you should, no, I was an example, because we've had a lot of problems with you. You didn't want me to do that. Pretty easy. But no, I'm just saying, you're gonna have people saying that.
Right.
If you're claiming that's your tree, then you're restoring my sidewalk.
And then my, because them are horrible, horrible.
Not just some we know. What kind of sidewalk ordinance is, is it in there or not? Not really. Well then, let's see what happens. I mean, I'm not opposed to that, but I think I've pretty much blown my tree trimming removal budget for the year just due to that ice storm.
And I've seen where other towns replaces the sidewalks no matter what.
You got that whole.
There's a sidewalk assessment in a lot of those for just every day and every year on their property taxes. I mean, if people, if council wanted to pass a sidewalk assessment for property taxes, they can charge people on their property taxes every year.
We tried that.
Yeah.
On the water bill, but it was reluctantly voted down, but I would really like to see it come back. Well, I guess the only thing you really need to put, or we take it down and we fix the sidewalk, or.
Well, the sidewalks committee should have minutes of their past discussions, too. And the councils, and the councils discusses before.
Did anything ever get decided in, in the ordinance? I say no.
We need the minutes to figure it out.
I mean, I'll do whatever, but you're, you're still gonna have some people arguing if they've gotta pay a nickel.
Well, we still have nine that's not affected, so they, you know, they're not all lifted up by a tree, so.
And I would just say this, because I took the boys for a bike ride the other week.
Oh, yeah.
And you're gonna be looking at dozens and dozens and dozens of trees that they're gonna need to come down. Then I get yelled at for being a nature hater, so, whatever. But no, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of trees need to come down to fix sidewalks. If you want budget money, that I don't know where you're gonna get it all from, but you guys make the rules.
But it'd be cheaper to fix a sidewalk, right, than cut a tree down?
Oh, yeah.
It's about $2,000, $3,000 for a tree, but on a sidewalk.
Nah, these guys have been a little. About $1,100 for the last tree, wasn't it? They just got done a whole bunch of work for about $4,100. That was quite a few removals, and then the stumps and some trimming. But you don't wanna replace a rotten sidewalk with the tree roots still in there.
Right.
That should go around it.
Then it's gonna fall.
No.
Then you got people riding their bike, and. I mean, I've seen them that way around town. Mine used to be that way.
One's got a flagpole in it now.
So there you go. I said, I'm not opposed to whatever, you, we just need to know what to tell people. I hate to see trees come up missing.
Anybody else that has anything, that would like to comment on anything?
Motion adjourned.
I'm sticking out.
Roll call, please.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yeah.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.